I'm going to go through a couple of how-tos before we get started, in case it's your first town meeting. When you're making a motion, or you're making an amendment to a motion, I need to have a written copy of that. In a lot of cases, you have that ready to go, which is great.
You can't hear.
You can't hear. Test one, two, three, four. Test one, two, three, four. One. Is that better? Yay! Okay. So when you make a motion or an amendment, I need that in written form. And so you can read it, and then you hand it to me, and we're not going to start discussion until I have a piece of paper in my hand. If you don't have it written down, and you need to make one on the fly, that's okay. We'll write it down, and you come over, make sure we got it right, and then you can make your motion. If there's a warrant article that we don't want to act on, we're going to use slightly different language than we've used in the past. The motion to not act on a warrant article will be, "I move, we take no action on Article whatever." All right? In the past, the town has used the word "table," which was never really right and was awfully confusing. If you need to make a point of order, I need you to stand and say "point of order." That's the only thing that's allowed to interrupt. A point of order is really just two things. Either you don't know what's going on, and you need me to explain it, or you think I messed up, and you want to tell me about it. That's what a point of order is for. If you have something to say, you need to step to the microphone to say it. You'll notice that I've moved the microphone a little bit, because I want you to be able to see me at the same time that you're talking to the group. I need you to say your name, and I want you to say what street you live on, and that's plenty. I don't need your full address, just your name and your street, so we know who you Sometimes debate can be dragging on, and you're getting impatient, and you don't think that I'm making the right choice about when we should move to a vote, and you want to move the question. That's okay, but moving the question is a motion, so you can't just shout it out from the floor. If you do that, I'm just going to ignore you. You wait, you get recognized, you walk to the microphone, you introduce yourself, and you say, "Mr. Moderator, I move the question." All right? If you open your hymnal to the first page, you're going to see some moderators' motions. These are new. I'm hoping that you've had a chance to look over them. I'm going to give you a minute to read them over, and then I'm going to ask for unanimous consent that we adopt these three motions as our rules of procedure tonight. The first one is to avoid me having to read the whole warrant before we get started, and each of the articles. The second one is to allow me to recognize people who aren't voters. And the third one is to allow me to count two-thirds votes with a voice vote, which I will do in my discretion. So, asking for unanimous consent that we adopt the three moderator motions. Is there any objection? There's a question?
On the third item regarding identifying two-thirds vote by voice, is there an appeal process if somebody doesn't agree?
There is. Yes. So if, on that or any vote, you think that I didn't do the count right, if seven people agree that it needs to be recounted, then we will do a standing count. That's Mass. General Law. That's just the way the rules are. So, hearing no objections, that motion, those motions carry, and we can move into the meeting. It's unanimous consent. There was no objection. We don't need a second. Article one. Do I have a motion? To choose town officers. Please identify yourself.
My name is Matthew Ergen. I live on Williamville Road.
Thank you.
I move that the town vote to pass over Article one to choose all other town officers, agents, and committees not elected by ballot, appointed and having already been acted upon.
Do I have a second? Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I have one small point of discussion, just to let you know. As the moderator, it's my job to appoint those people over there who sit on the Finance A month ago, I appointed Ralph Rogers to a vacant seat, the seat that had been vacated, so his term will end next year, 2020. I am reappointing Claire Adamidis, so her seat will expire in 2022, and I'm appointing a new member to the Finance Committee for the other chair for 2022, Eric Riker. FYI. So, any discussion on number one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Article two, reports from committees.
Mr. Moderator, Greg O'Sullivan, South Street, Mary. I move that the town vote to accept the reports of the Selectment. School Committee, other departments, both committees, with all annual reports, will be accepted at the Town Office Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Moderator? Point of order? Point of order?
Yes.
I'd like to make a mo— I didn't know that—I didn't hear an opportunity to make a motion to change the flow of the meeting.
Come forward. Yeah, I don't want to use them.
My name is Tom Donahue from Goff Road.
Do you have a motion?
My name is Tom Donahue from Goff Road, and I'd like to move to change the order of articles to consider from Article thirty prior. I move Article thirty prior to Article twenty-seven.
There's a motion on the floor to move Article thirty to be considered before Article twenty-seven. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of this?
Can you speak for our state committee?
Okay. Really, I'm not going to accept anyone asking a question from the floor. You have to come up to the microphone.
I seek clarification as to a reason.
Maureen Marshall is requesting clarification.
Maureen Marshall, East River Clutch Street. I seek clarification for the representation.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My reasoning for making the motion is that we have had, just regarding the cannabis moratorium, to move before the cannabis bylaw discussions. We, as a town, have voted and discussed cannabis at, I think, three town meetings now, and if we can push the vote on the moratorium prior to the bylaw discussion, it will eliminate the safety net in the town, and we can actually get some business done on passing a substantive bylaw regarding cannabis.
Any other discussion? Yes.
Douglas Martin, Sheldon Road. I see no reason to move the moratorium in front of the marijuana bylaw. If we pass a marijuana bylaw, we don't have any need for moratorium, and we can put that motion aside. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Moderator, my name is Dennis Fleming. I live on West Street. I can go with the general of the planning board that we don't want to put the cat before the horse here. Let's leave this along the way it is and see how things turn out. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Williamville Road. Question I have is that, in a special town meeting, I believe, the town voted to approve a moratorium with a standing motion in this month, if I'm correct. Do we know if the state approved that or not? Does somebody from the town, you verify whether that was approved or not yet?
More foreign.
Attorney Barrett? Please step to the line. Attorney Barrett is our town council. He's not a voter, and Barrett.
I've been in a conversation with the Assistant Attorney General, that's in charge of reviewing municipal bylaws, and they have not acted as of today on the moratorium that we had at the prior special town meeting.
Dean.
Hi, Dean. My identity is Chapman or Barrett. I don't know that this is a crazy idea, and if I can explain my reasoning. This discussion has been going on now for fourteen, fifteen months, and it's been brought to both an annual town meeting, a special town meeting, and here we are again at another annual town meeting, talking about the same subject. I really believe that everybody wants to get this resolved, and we didn't place some good workable bylaws for our town, because if we don't do this tonight, we're going to look like fools in the Worcester Telegram tomorrow, and I think Barrett is way, way better than that. The reason I don't think it's a bad idea, because as we've talked about this, we've always had that safety net. Everybody would whisper it, "Warrant worry." If it doesn't work, "Warrant worry." Well, we've already seen that the last time that the moratorium was voted for, the Attorney General still hasn't endorsed it. I can't speak for the Attorney General, but asking for a third time might be tricky. Maybe if we do resolve that issue first, maybe we can sit, stand here, and really work out Article twenty-seven. These guys worked hard on it. They have—the they have the best interests in this town. The people who want to work this out also have the best interests. So maybe if we take away that safety net, we'll actually get some work done tonight on the floor, and we'll all get home before midnight. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm David Craig, South Valley Road. We have three bylaws. We have three bylaws for marijuana, and when those pass, there is no need for a moratorium. So it was put to put in the pot before the horse. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I'm calling a vote. We are voting on whether to move—do I have it on paper? Yeah. We're voting on whether to move Article thirty to be considered before Article twenty-seven. Does everyone understand what we're voting on? Just changing the order of things. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The motion does not carry. We will not change the order of articles. If there are any other requests to change the orders of articles, I want them to be raised now. I will not consider them later in the meeting. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, thank you once again, David Craig, South Valley Road. I make the motion to advance Articles twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty forward for voting.
To what point? Forward to what point? To now, to before some other article? To now?
Yes.
I need that on paper, and I need it signed. Do I have a second? I'm sorry. Do I have a second? Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to move Articles twenty-six through thirty to now. So we would immediately start considering all marijuana articles right now. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Do I have counters? Lester? I'm appointing the fire chief, our chairman. Chuck? Who? Chuck Radlow? Great. You're off the hook, fire chief. All those in favor of moving these articles to now, I would like you to stand. Lester, you take that side, including with Board of Selectment. Chuck, you take that side, including with Finance Committee. Go ahead and count. Please be seated. All those opposed to changing the order, please stand. Go ahead and count. Please be seated. The count is sixty-nine in favor, ninety-eight opposed. The motion does not carry. We will take the remainder of the articles in the order that they appear in the warrant. We're on Article three.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept any and all state highway assistance funds authorized by the state legislature and approved by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Highway Division, under the so-called Chapter ninety highway assistance program, to be expended for the maintenance, repair, and destruction of town roads in anticipation of reimbursement under the direction of the Board of Selectment. For work on the roads located on the state eight primary system as approved by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Highway Division, and further to authorize the treasurer collector with the approval of the Board of Selectment to borrow money from time to time during the fiscal year 2020 up to the reimbursable amount for the period from July 1st, nineteen through June 30th, 2020, in anticipation of reimbursement of said highway assistance in conformity with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section six A.
I have a motion and a second. Can I have the motion signed, please? Any discussion? I'm going to point out that you have, as I said at the beginning, a sheet of paper that tells you how the Finance Committee has voted. They vote on every one of these things, as to whether they think it's a good idea. The Selectment also vote on every one of these things, whether they think it's a good idea, and they put that all here. I'm not going to take the time during this meeting to always tell you what that is. You can look yourself. I will try and remember to call attention to it if it's anything other than favorable. No discussion on Article three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Article four.
Dylan Clark, Wallnail Road. I move that the town vote to authorize the treasurer collector with the approval of the Board of Selectment to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of the revenue of the fiscal year 2020, a period from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, in conformity with provisions of the Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section four, and to issue a note or notes as may be given for a period of less than one year in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seventeen, and to authorize the treasurer collector to enter into a compensating balance agreement or agreements for fiscal year 2020 pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. May I have the motion, please? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Article five, revolving funds.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion, I move that the town vote to authorize revolving funds for the library, board health, electrical inspector, plumbing inspector, gas inspector, police department, fire department, council and aging, and town departments utilizing permitting software pursuant to NGL forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019. As presented in the Finance Committee proposal, and further authorized the town clerk to establish the appropriate numbering of this bylaw to be in compliance with the numbering format of the code for town of Barrett.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Paul Krantz of Old Culbridge Road. I noticed that there are several more revolving accounts this year than there were last year and the years prior, specifically noting there's one for where the detailed administrative fees and cruiser fees are to be used for canine cruiser replacement. So I'm curious whether or not those revolving funds were addressed with town council, because normally what happens is we would have funds coming in from inspector fees, and those fees are used, like the electrical inspector, they're used for electrical things. So I'm kind of confused where detailed administrative fees and cruiser fees are specifically to be used for canine cruiser replacement. It doesn't seem to go along with where the funds come from, or what the funds are being used for, and I'm wondering if the town council looked at this, and whether or not this is an appropriate use of funds that are coming in specifically for detail and being used for canine.
We have a question directed at town council. I would like town council to respond to the question.
The answer is no.
Do you have a follow-up?
I do have a follow-up, thank you. So the question is, is that an appropriate use of funds for detailed administrative fees and cruiser fees to specifically use for canine cruiser replacement, when the fees coming in are supposed to be from specific programs and activities supported by the revolving fund, but one has nothing to do with the other? So I'm curious whether or not that's an appropriate use of funds. Anyone?
The—has the Selectment discussed this issue at all?
Well, has the Finance Committee—
Please.
Has the Finance Committee discussed this issue, revolving funds?
Claire Adamis, Town Council. We didn't have them discuss it specifically. We know what they're using it, using it for.
Mr. Krantz, would you be interested in offering an amendment to this to address the concern that you have?
Yes, I would be interested in, well, no, I just—I would like to point out that I—I don't want to offer a amendment, because I don't want to write anything, but my point is—
I'm happy to do it. If you say it, I'll write it.
No, no, I don't want—I don't want to offer a amendment. I just want to point out that that's not an appropriate use of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half. It's very specific. You've taken funds from a particular program or activity, like electrical inspections, and then you use them for electrical things. This says, for instance, Barry Falls dam contractual revenue to be used for cruiser replacement. One has nothing to do with the other. It's a completely inappropriate use of funds under this statute. It shouldn't be in here.
I'm Pat Colvin, Oakham Road. I have the same issue with council and aging revenue source fees and events to be used for programs and events. Is my understanding center central as a whole? Can't raise money. How can we raise money to spend money that we can't legally raise?
Does anyone have an answer to that question? Apparently not. Any other discussion? Chief.
The count is sixty-nine in favor, ninety-eight opposed. The motion does not carry. We will take the remainder of the articles in the order that they appear in the warrant. We're on Article Three.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept any and all state highway assistance funds authorized by the state legislature and approved by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Highway Division under the so-called Chapter Ninety Highway Assistance Program to be expended for the maintenance, repair, and destruction of town roads in anticipation of reimbursement under direction of the Board of Selectment. To work on the roads located on the State Eight primary system as approved by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation and Highway Division. And further to authorize the treasurer collector with the approval of the Board of Selectment to borrow money from time to time during fiscal year 2020 up to the reimbursable amount for the period from July first, nineteen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty, in anticipation of reimbursement of said highway assistance in conformity with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section six A.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I have the motion signed, please? Any discussion? I'm going to point out that you have, as I said at the beginning, a sheet of paper that tells you how the Finance Committee has voted. They vote on every one of these things as to whether they think it's a good idea. The Selectmen also vote on every one of these things, whether they think it's a good idea. And they put that all here. I'm not going to take the time during this meeting to always tell you what that is. You can look yourself. I will try and remember to call attention to it if it's anything other than favorable. No discussion on Article Three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Article Four.
Dylan Clark, Wallen Hill Road. I move that the town vote to authorize the treasurer collector with the approval of the Board of Selectment to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of the revenue of the fiscal year 2020, period from July first, twenty nineteen through June thirty of twenty twenty, in conformity with provisions of the Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section four, and to issue a note or notes as may be given for a period of less than one year in accordance with Massachusetts General Law's Chapter Forty-four, Section seventeen, and to authorize the treasurer collector to enter into a compensating balance agreement or agreements for fiscal year 2020 pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section fifty-three F.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have the motion, please? Is there any discussion? Are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Article Five, revolving funds.
Mr. Moderator, matter of employment of the road. Make a motion. I move that the town vote to authorize revolving funds for the library, board health, electrical inspector, plumbing inspector, gas inspector, police department, fire department, council and aging, and town departments utilizing permitting software pursuant to MGL forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half for fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and nineteen. As presented in the Finance Committee proposal, further authorize the town clerk to establish the appropriate numbering of this bylaw to be in compliance with the numbering format of the code for town of Barry.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Paul Krantz of Old Culver Road. I noticed that there are several more revolving accounts this year than there were last year and the years prior, specifically noting there's one for where the detailed administrative fees and cruiser fees are to be used for K-9 cruiser replacement. So I'm curious whether or not those revolving funds were addressed with town council because normally what happens is we would have funds coming in from inspector fees and those fees are used, like the electrical inspector, they're used for electrical things. So I'm kind of confused where detailed administrative fees and cruiser fees are specifically to be used for K-9 cruiser replacement. It doesn't seem to go along with where the funds come from, what the funds are being used for, and I'm wondering if the town council looked at this and whether or not this is an appropriate use of funds that are coming in specifically for detail and being used for K-9.
We have a question directed at town council. I would like town council to respond to the question.
The answer is no.
Do you have a follow-up?
I do have a follow-up, thank you. So the question is, is that an appropriate use of funds where detailed administrative fees and cruiser fees are specifically used for K-9 cruiser replacement when the fees coming in are supposed to be from specific programs and activities supported by the revolving fund, but one has nothing to do with the other? So I'm curious whether or not that's an appropriate use of funds. Anyone?
The... Has the Selectmen discussed this issue at all?
Well, has the Finance Committee...
Please.
Was this presented to the Finance Committee?
Has the Finance Committee discussed this issue, revolving funds?
Claire, out of I-This Town Account. We didn't have them discuss it specifically. We know what they're using it, using it for.
Mr. Krantz, would you be interested in offering an amendment to this to address the concern that you have?
Uh, yes, I would be interested in, well... No, I just, I would like to point out that I don't want to offer an amendment because I don't want to write anything, but my point is...
I'm happy to do it. If you say it, I'll write it.
No, no, I don't want to, I don't want to offer an amendment. I just want to point out that that's not an appropriate use of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half. It's very specific. You've taken funds from a particular program or activity, like electrical inspections, and then you use them for electrical things. This says, for instance, Barry Falls Dam contractual revenue to be used for cruiser replacement. One has nothing to do with the other. It's a completely inappropriate use of funds under this statute. It shouldn't be in here.
I have the same issue with council and aging revenue source fees and events to be used for programs and events. Is my understanding center central as a whole? Can't raise money. How can we raise money to, or spending money that we can't legally raise?
Does anyone have an answer to that question? Apparently not. Any other discussion? Chief.
I'd like to explain the three issues for... I'd like to explain the three requests that we've made. Currently, we have a warrant that allows us to use money raised from details when they pay easy cruiser. We turn that around, we use it for administrative uses and moving car roads. We are getting more money into that account because we require all of the main roads to be, if there's a detail, they have to use it for, for safety reasons. We do want to get a K-9 program. If we get a K-9 program, that K-9 car will be a car that goes on details just like every other car, which means we're looking for a way to not cost the town the money for a K-9 car every seven years when you generally replace that car. So we decided what we asked to do is split the account now into two-thirds to continue with what we've been using before, which is maintenance, et cetera, and these are expenses. And one-third strictly be put aside for that K-9 car, which will be used on details, therefore they'll be wearing to our apps to the warrant. The second is the Barry Falls Dam. We very specifically use a cruiser to go out to patrol Barry Falls Dam. We got their, they, we miss a certain, we have a contract for certain amount of money every year. We've gotten it increased. Basically, that would pay off one cruiser fight. So the town wouldn't have to give no money. So that's the basic idea behind those. Basically replacing two cars every seven years that the town does not have to come up with that account.
Mr. Irvin.
Not sure who may have this answer from administration or Finance Committee, but we, we know what the current balance in these detail fees account is. It looks like we're requesting the ability to use a hundred and sixteen thousand in FY twenty, because you've got fifty thousand listed in two of them and sixteen thousand in the third. Well, let me rephrase that. You're looking at sixty-six thousand, because the third one, you're right, is saying coming from a separate funding source.
Um, please, I think you're going to have to, if you're going to use that, you're going to put it right next to your mouth. Here, right now.
The account request is it is only a spending money. There's no money in that account at this moment.
What he said is that those are spending caps, the numbers. Those are not balances. There's currently no balance in those accounts. Is there any further discussion of this motion? Mr. Krantz.
At the bottom of page five, it says, "to be used for K-9 cruiser replacement." Do we currently have a K-9 cruiser?
Chief, do we currently have a K-9 cruiser?
No.
The chief says, "No, we do not currently have a K-9 cruiser."
So I don't know how we can replace something we don't have. And I don't know how you can use detailed administrative fees or cruiser fees specifically for the K-9 cruiser replacement. So I'm not sure where that leaves us unless I make a motion to remove that from the list, but it just appears very clear that it doesn't belong here. And I'm a little disturbed that someone didn't take a look at that before we got here.
Mr. Irvin.
If you would allow, I don't have it in writing yet, but if it just may, I would like to make it verbal, then mark it up and write it.
I can write it down while you...
They will amend the table of revolving funds as listed specific to the police department Item one, that we've been discussing, detail administrative fees and cruiser fees of one-third revenue source. Use of funds to replace used for K-9 cruiser replacement. I would like to replace that with, "to be used for a cruiser replacement."
So you want to strike K-9?
From that use of funds description.
You want to strike the word, you want to strike K-9 from the eighth line of the table.
Under the column of use of funds, correct. Under the column of FY twenty spending limit, I would like to identify that as one dollar or zero. This is an account to be built, is my understanding. We just were told there's no money in the account. So I would not like to authorize spending in an account that has a zero balance. They can come back next year in FY twenty one and request a spending limit.
Hang on, you skipped ahead to discussion? You're making an amendment?
I would take all that back. The answer is FY twenty spending limit, I would like to revise to zero dollars.
So you want to change the dollar amount on line eight of the table to zero?
Second.
I'm writing it down.
Going to line nine, which is the next page in the book. I would like to reduce column FY twenty spending limit from fifty thousand to ten thousand, which I believe is the, never mind, fifty thousand to ten thousand.
Okay.
That's it. There was mine.
There's a motion on the floor to amend, to strike K-9 from the eighth line of the table, to change the spending limit to zero on line eight of the table, and to change the spending limit to ten thousand on line nine of the table. Do I have a second?
I have a motion and a second for the amendment. Is there any discussion of the amendment? Um, the amendment, it... You need to come up and ask a question.
My name is Ralph Gendron, H.G., Southbury. My question is, if you change it to ten thousand, you, you have been requesting a new cruiser. You don't have enough money to buy a cruiser for two thousand dollars. I'm a little confused on that, or is this just supplement? Thank you.
His mind is standing based on the description the police chief provided in the revised agreement with the Barry Falls Dam. Is it the state police? I don't know a specific entity, but we have an agreement that they pay us a certain amount each year. The intent was the revenues over five years would cover the cost of a cruiser. We have not created this account yet, so there's no balance in the account. My understanding is the revenues were approximately ten thousand a year, which would come to that fifty thousand, but I do need clarification. We're looking at seven thousand, actually. It's a confirmation I just received from the chief. So the reason I was identifying the spending limit as a lower number was specific to knowing that we will not have revenues this year to cover that.
Yes, sir.
Did you just, did the motion get amended and one of these accounts was amended to zero? Did I hear that right?
Yeah, that's correct. The, the, what we're discussing right now is a proposed amendment to cut the spending limit of one of those line items to zero.
Okay. I don't think that's the way the fifty-three E and a half account works. The limit here, the fifty-three E and a half account is inflows and outflows. You have permit money that comes in, and then instead of going to the general fund, it goes into this account and it can be spent rather than going into the general fund like any other money that the municipality takes. If you change it to zero, you can't even take any money in. So you can't do it that way. Is the town accountant here? Maybe she could, tell me if I'm right, but I'm pretty sure I'm right. In a way, fifty-three E and a half account is, these are the limits of inflows and outflows that the account can take.
Yes, yeah. Why is it spending on an account?
It's a spending limit, is what he said.
And is the town accountant here? Chief, can I answer that question? Am I, am I completely wrong? Am I going to fool myself?
Could you please step over to the microphone so people can hear? Thank you.
Jean Joel, Wallen Hill Road, on the town accountant. Spending limit is the amount of money that you can spend out of that account in any one year. It has nothing to do with the revenue that's going to come into that account. So if there's seven thousand dollars coming from the Barry Falls Dam as a contract amount for the police department, then that's going to be seven thousand dollars. Revolving accounts roll, as long as that town meeting, we reapprove them, the money in those accounts will roll every year. So in five years, you'll have a bigger amount of money, and you probably won't have fifty, but you'll have close to it. And so you could end up spending some of it, or you could spend up to fifty. So they can never, ever spend over fifty thousand dollars of that money that's in that revolving account.
Thank you. Yes?
Can I say one other thing?
Yeah, sure.
Revolving funds, like you have, you have a couple here for the police department using admin fees from details. Those admin fees right now are going into, they're also being used for administrative costs on anything the police department wants to do, plus things for cruiser. Now, the chief is right, that the K-9 cruiser would also be used for details. So we're only trying to distinguish between a regular cruiser and a K-9 unit cruiser, because they're going to be doing the same thing, going to be trolling the roads like everything else. They're going to be used for details.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Irvin, Wallen Hill Road, just a follow-up question. If the limit, the spending limit is ten thousand, but the revolving fund has only taken in seven thousand, seems to be more than seven thousand for that account.
They can not all spend spending limit at any time, but the town meeting changes that spending limit at every town meeting.
She said that you can only, you, you can't spend more than the spending limit until town meeting changes the, the spending limit at town meeting.
But it could take them five years, five years to build up to that spending limit, and then they can spend it.
But it could take you some time to get up to that spending limit before you spend it. And she says that, and these revolving funds need to be reapproved at every annual town meeting. Is there further discussion of the amendment? I'm going to take a vote on the amendment. We are voting on whether to amend the eighth and ninth lines of that table. Everyone understand? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The amendment does not carry. I'm now going to call for a vote on the main motion. The main motion is for the revolving funds as it's currently written in the book because it was not amended. Everyone understand? All those in favor of the motion on Article Five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It carries. Article Six.
Article Six. I move that the town vote to authorize the use of twenty-five thousand dollars in the PEG access revolving fund. The PEG access pursuant to Mass. General Law Forty-four, Section fifty-three F, for three quarters, for fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and nineteen.
Seconded.
Do we have a motion and a second on Article Six? Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Article Seven on MGL, Chapter twenty-six A, Section twenty-one A.
Mr. Moderator, Jesse Warren, Gilbert Road. I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Assessors to appoint one of its members to a part-time position under their supervision as allowed by MGL, Chapter two-sixty-eight A, Section twenty-one A.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Article Eight, Board of Assessors' Property Valuations.
Jesse Warren, Gilbert Road. I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate twenty thousand for costs associated with the assessors' recertification properties, raise an appropriate fifteen hundred for special appraisal expenses, raise an appropriate six thousand for cyclical reinspection costs, and raise an appropriate seven thousand, seven hundred annual interim value adjustments for a total of thirty-five thousand, two hundred dollars.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion of this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Article Nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer thirteen thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars in free cash to the FY nineteen snow rule overtime account.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of this motion? Oh, he neglected to give the account number. The account number's on here. I'll spare you all the reading, but he's actually moving the account number as well. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion's unanimous. Article Ten.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer forty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-four cents from free cash to the FY nineteen snow rule expense account.
Again, there's an account number on the version we're targeting. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Article Eleven.
Dylan Clark, Wallen Hill Road. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer ten thousand dollars from free cash to pay for other post-employment benefits or OPBB.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion of that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Article 12.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town-
Please identify yourself.
John Carbone, Gilbert Road. I move that the town vote to transfer $35,000 from free cash to pay for a new police department division.
Second.
Can I have your motion, please? Sorry about that. So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
How does that back-
Please step to the microphone, Mr. President.
Very loud. How does that factor in with the revolving account that we're supposed to collect and pay for cruises?
I believe that question is probably directed to the police chief?
Every five years, we'll have money to buy a cruiser, so once we start with the revolving fund, we should have every five years approximately money for a cruiser. It won't be this one this time, but at some point, when we have enough money, it'll save the town a little.
Do you have a follow-up, Mr. President?
So, when the revolving account, they requested $50,000 for a K-9 cruiser, they were asking for $35,000 for a cruiser, so I'm confused. So, the bylaw passed without amendment, so if we collect $50,000 or $30,000 from the Barry Falls Dam, we're going to have enough money for a cruiser. Why do we need this one to buy another cruiser? I'm trying to figure out how that factors in, and whether or not the Finance Committee discussed that and how that works.
Did the Finance Committee discuss that?
Yes, we did, and we need a cruiser now. We have one that's very good.
Mr. President, do you have a follow-up?
So, that doesn't answer my question. So, if I got $50,000 that comes in from Barry Falls Dam, and then I have $30,000 for a new cruiser, what do we do with $80,000 if we only need one new cruiser?
Ruggles Sullivan, School Street North, I'll take an attempt to clarify this. This, these funds, if you purchase a cruiser this year, this particular year, because we need one this year. The revolving account is an account which currently is empty, which you will add funds into as you collect and administer the fees. Rather than spend another day, he thinks he wishes to put them aside and let them go back as an estate until he can purchase a cruiser. We're gonna try to purchase a cruiser every year and replace these, because we've put it probably 120, 150,000 miles here in all of them, so that's what comes on the cruiser in five years. So, if every five years, any cruiser's replaced, we'll replace one every year. When this revolving fund has enough money, it will replace it through the cruiser as opposed to this balance here. This year, the revolving fund is zero. There's no funds in it to buy a cruiser, but we will not have 85,000, we will have 35,000 to buy one cruiser in this year. Hopefully, in five years, we won't ask for this 35,000 because we'll hardly be in revolving fund in five years from now. But for right now, this year, this is 35,000, one cruiser, zero of the funds to be diverted to those revolving funds. Those be collected fees and placed in this year's, in one avenue.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion of this? Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Article 13.
John Carbone, Gilbert Road. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $18,000 from free cash to pay for new service weapons for the police department.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Chief has requested to amend the explanation that appears in the Finance Committee booklet. Can I have your motion, please?
In the explanation, it just doesn't mention that there are two subcompact weapons being purchased, two for carry to, for a company. Yes, are we going on a field trip, or carry to training, or something like that, or not in uniform? Just to make sure everybody knew that we'd be wanting two subcompacts to replace two subcompacts, we have in addition to our regular duty carrying.
Yes, sir. Now, I need you to step to the microphone. Thank you.
Chuck Ragalo, Warwin Road. Chief, I didn't see, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, I didn't see anywhere in the explanation any indication of how many weapons total are being purchased with the $18,000.
Thank you. Chief, can you address that?
There are 20 duty carry weapons, two, we can subcompact, and then with that, ulsters, sources, meaning magazines, and source holders, and lights going.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Please step.
Richard Mark, Dana Road. This is how you look to speak, but I think no gun.
Can you guys please?
I didn't know guns wore out. And if they do wear out, and you replace them, what do you do with the old ones?
Well, they do wear out, and they wear out faster in our use because of all the qualifications that we do on them, and then the multiple owners, as officers leave and officers come. We recommend, we have six hours, the maker of a weapon we carry, that's also the weapon we're going to be replacing these with if this passes. They recommend, the police use this gun, lasts eight to 10 years, but this is what they tell us. We've had these since 2007, so we're over that. What do we do with them? Well, we've worked out the deal with a rep, that they're gonna give us a credit per gun as we trade them in. In this case, it's about $265 a gun to trade it in towards the first, so we'll save money.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. On Article 14, the DPW Street Sweeper.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $100,000 from free cash to pay for a new refurbished street sweeper for the Department of Public Works.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Can I have the motion, please? Just to be clear, it says new slash refurbished in the motion. Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Article 15, DPW Lawnmower.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $8,000 from free cash to pay for a new lawnmower for the Department of Public Works.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Article 16, Fire Department Engine Four Equipment.
Robert Reelski, Warwin Road. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $8,000 from free cash to purchase various equipment for the fire department, outfit and uniform.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I'll call your attention that their Board of Selectmen was favorable, but there was one extension. I don't know if anyone cares.
Extension, we've got one that's fine.
There is an extension because he was a member of the fire department. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Article 17, Felton Field Improvements.
Larry Marsh, Pleasant Street. I move that the town vote to transfer 15,000 from free cash for improvements to Felton Field under the care of Felton Field Commission.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I'd just like to thank the Budget Finance Committee and the Selectmen in Andrewon Sandy too, for the support of Felton Field Improvements. As most of you know, maybe some of you don't, Felton Field is a multifunctional recreational area of 25 acres, and it's undergoing some major improvements right now. We've removed trees, and we're putting up a fence presently, and we have a lot of work we need to do there.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Article 18, Ruggles Lane PA System Replacement.
Sheila Muir, Murphy Road. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $15,000 from free cash for the replacement of the PA system at Ruggles Lane Elementary School.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Article 19, Ruggles Lane Dishwasher Repair.
Mr. Moderator, Sheila Muir, 23, Murphy Road. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $5,200 from free cash to repair the dishwasher at Ruggles Lane Elementary School.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Again, Richard Mark, Dana Road. I'm assuming that this has all been priced out. I assume that there's a part that needs to be replaced, and was labor involved. We've had an arrangement with Monty Tech, couldn't they do the labor? I know it's, we're talking, you know, 50 cents compared to everything else here, but it seems like every little bit else.
So, yes, it is a booster pump that is needed for the dishwasher. It's not heating the water to sanitation level necessary for cleaning the utensils that are used for serving lunch. In order to have that installed by an outside entity, it would void the warranty on the part.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Paul Prans, Old Gilbert Road. I'm just curious, I've been coming to town meetings for a number of years, and I don't ever remember replacing the dishwasher parts, and I'm assuming that this isn't the first time we've had a problem with the dishwasher, so I'm wondering why we're paying for it now? Is that not included in the maintenance budget under the regular school budget, and why that's now coming up? I'm assuming that, I'm just confused why this is the first time this is happening.
So, in accordance with our regional grid, any expenses that are in school buildings owned by towns, anything over $5,000 is a responsibility of the town.
I think the implication is this is the first time it's been over $5,000.
So, we're at 5,200, we couldn't get in at 49,000?
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Article 20, Wachusett Greenways.
Mr. Moderator, Pauline Abrams, Wachusett Greenways Town of Holden.
Oh, I can recognize you to speak, but I can't recognize you to make the motion, so I'm gonna need somebody else to make that motion.
Ruggles Sullivan, School Street North. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $1,000 from free cash to the Wachusett Greenway Trail.
Thank you. Can you sign that? Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. You want to discuss it? You want to explain it? Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
I'm the only one to speak. So, I love Wachusett Greenways, but it's a nonprofit, and I'm trying to figure out why we're spending my tax dollars on a nonprofit. I've never seen this on the Warren before, so I love what they do, but I don't think we should be supporting a nonprofit organization. It doesn't make sense to me that they're making.
Do you want to address that?
Well, welcome. So, Wachusett Greenways is all volunteer nonprofit. We have worked in partnership with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, including the DCR, and with the Wachusett where towns, including the town of Berry, and some other towns, to build and maintain the Mass Central Rail Trail between Berry and Sterling. The last, the most westernmost section of the trail that we've built so far, ending up at the rest stop at the Rare River, crossing over the White Valley Bridge. Just got a new patrol. She happens to be from Berry, is a lady, and she's already been out with her weed whacker clearing around the benches and a picnic stone on Berry's section of the trail. And it just works. We think it's in the best interest of the Commonwealth to have these public-private partnerships, and we think that we get a whole lot of bank for your buck with a lot of volunteers who also write the grants and go forth and develop the trail. But it's all a partnership. And in particular, the $1,000 that we're asking for, in each of the towns, a couple, one town a little bit less, five, four ones, other towns a little more, who've been contributing for many years. And one port of the restroom costs $1,200 per year, so it just, we're hoping to keep increasing the way we maintain the trail to make it better, and that will mean more equipment to maintain it, but also occasionally hiring someone to do ditch cleaning beyond what we can do. A lot of us are spending a lot of time in the ditches lately, and perhaps Dr. Yonder would like to add a word or two?
Mr. Yager.
Mr. Moderator, I just see the rail trail as an extension of park and rep. I see it as an extension of good health, getting useful health. We do subsidize the Recreation Commission in providing swimming lessons- We do subsidize the Recreation Commission in providing swimming lessons. We have that, and it's a similar operation.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Article twenty-one, the Omnibus Budget. We are going to have a whole series of motions under this, and each one of them is going to have its own thoughts. General Government.
Mr. Moderator, Mad Ervin, Williamsville Road. I'd like to make a motion on Article twenty-one regarding the Omnibus Budget specific to General Government. I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate eight hundred twenty-five thousand, one hundred twenty-one dollars to pay the cost of General Government as shown in the Finance Committee booklet. You will notice that your booklet actually does require a revision to the total. It is eight hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Eight hundred twenty-five thousand, one hundred twenty-one dollars.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. Does everybody understand the difference, so he said a slightly different number than what's in the booklet? Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Police Department.
John Carbone, Harwood Road. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate seventy-nine thousand, ninety-two dollars to pay the costs of police as shown in the Finance Committee booklet.
Seconded.
I have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Dispatch.
John Carbone, Murphy Road. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate one hundred forty-three thousand, four hundred and forty dollars to pay the cost of dispatch as shown in the Finance Committee booklet.
Seconded.
It's moved in seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Ambulance.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer four hundred twenty-five thousand from the ambulance receipt reserve account, to transfer ten thousand from the rangers' receipts for EMS services, and to raise an appropriate eighty-eight thousand, eighty-six dollars for a total of five hundred twenty-three thousand, eighty-six dollars to pay the cost of ambulance as shown in the Finance Committee booklet.
Seconded.
I have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Fire.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate two hundred fifty-three thousand, six hundred twenty-six to pay the cost of fire as shown in the Finance Committee booklet.
Seconded.
I have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Animal Control.
John Carbone, Harwood Road. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars to pay the costs of animal control as shown in the Finance Committee booklet.
Seconded.
I have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Emergency Management.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate one thousand dollars to pay the cost of emergency management as shown in the Finance Committee booklet.
Seconded.
I have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Regulatory.
Ruggles Sullivan, School Street North. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate seventy-seven thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars to pay the cost of Building Department, to raise an appropriate sixty-two thousand, six hundred dollars to pay the cost of the Board of Health slash Inspection Services, and raise an appropriate thirty thousand, two hundred twenty dollars to pay the cost of the land use for a total of one hundred seventy-three hundred ninety-five, one hundred seventy thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars as shown in the Finance Committee booklet.
Seconded.
I have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Richard Bartlett, Dana Road. Mr. Quick, we don't need a building clerk anymore? We don't need a building clerk?
Is somebody from, yeah, go ahead.
On the record, sorry, the third one down.
So the, if you'll notice on the Board of Health line item?
Yeah.
There's one individual that serves both roles.
Okay.
That's both building clerk and the Board of Health clerk.
Okay.
In order for it to be easier to track budgetary-wise, we combine those into one position.
All right, and then the shared public nurse on the next week?
That was an unused line item. Pretty easier. We should have the.
Okay, so we have money budgeted, but it wasn't needed. We don't need a shared.
Correct.
Thank you.
Let's try and minimize those pensive back and forths in the future. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. DPW.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred twenty-six dollars to pay the cost of DPW administration, Town Roads and Snowy Road, raise an appropriate forty-three thousand, two hundred forty dollars to pay the cost of parking commons, raise an appropriate thirty thousand dollars to pay the cost of streetlights, raise an appropriate sixteen thousand, five hundred twenty dollars to pay the cost of cemetery, raise an appropriate five thousand dollars to pay the cost of tree ward for a total of seven hundred and thirty-two, five hundred and eighty-six as shown in the Finance Committee booklet.
Seconded.
I have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
I'm Phil Hubbard of Twenty-Something G Street. I have a question about line one twenty-six for its common expenses, and this is direct to the board of district. I have a question about the van stand on the Common Center of Barry. What are the plans for repairing that van stand and making it operational for the summer concerts? I enjoy the ones in South Barry, but I'd like to see them restored in the center of town, and I understand there was talk about paying details for the lease that covered that expense, but I haven't heard anything more about it, but I could end up there.
Mr. Irvin.
Chairman of the Board, Chairman of the Select Board, Mad Ervin, Williamsville Road. In response to the question, we actually did, just for information, go into a lot more detail at last night's Board Selectment meeting. It is available on YouTube for any more clarification for the crowd, but to summarize, what we are dealing with right now is a combination of issues, starting with the general scope of work of what we are intending to do started with the Common Oversight Committee that was looking at reviewing and making the recommendations on how to spend the balance of the money that was approved to be loaned for all the improvements in the North Common area. So that it started there. We started getting proposals and scopes of work to do just that work. Well, we have come to find, or what I should say, to do just what they're asking. Update it, fix it, make it so that it can last for years, not just get through the summer. We've come into some regulatory requirements that made that very difficult, and we're trying to work through them. Part of that is the accessibility requirement. If you invest too much into a site, you have to upgrade everything to accessibility. We know there's competing opinions about that for something that many feel they don't want a thirty-foot-long ramp for accessibility to get to the top of that sitting in the middle of their common. So there's many things we're still trying to work through to figure out how best we can do it within the regulatory requirements on how we can spend our money. So the answer is, we are working on the problem, but we do not have any final answers. We've broken down pieces. We want to refinish the floor. We want to redo these steps. We want to deal with the bulkhead. We understand there's still some concerns potentially with the roof. The audio equipment was requested. We see we can upgrade that. So all of these things are on the table, but the cost total is greater than the thirty percent threshold of the access value of the property, which means if we knew anything, we have to upgrade everything to accessibility, which includes finding a way for anybody in a wheelchair to get to the top of that platform.
Mr. Hubbard.
Mr. Hubbard, are you also addressing the cost of the lease details, stuff playing involved?
Not at all. The answer to that question is no. You're strictly talking about upgrading the facility. The actual operations and how the common is used is not at all involved with this discussion.
Separated. Any further discussion? Yes.
Rebecca La Venture, Valley Road. My question is, if there is thirty thousand dollars in the budget for streetlights, why are living on a street that's completely pitch black?
Does somebody want to answer that question?
I don't pick which ones are on and off. It's the select one.
Does someone from the Select Board want to answer that question?
Since I like the knot, I do have to agree with Mr. Hubbard. But the answer to that is, there's over two hundred lights around the town, and this is just really covering the cost to keep them lit. It's not maintenance. This is just paying the electric bill for all the streetlights across town.
Please correct all your questions to the moderator.
You do not have any on, or you do not have any? Okay.
Please, I don't want discussions happening on the floor. If you have questions for you need to direct them through me.
What would I have to do to get them turned on?
Mr. Irvin.
Call your utility company and request them to fix it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Culture and Recreation.
Lester Paquin, Pleasant Street. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate six thousand dollars to pay the cost of recreation, raise an appropriate two thousand, five hundred dollars to pay the cost of the youth commission, raise an appropriate one thousand, two hundred dollars to pay the cost of historical commission, raise an appropriate two thousand, one hundred dollars for holiday decorations, raise an appropriate five hundred dollars to pay the cost of South Berry Common, raise an appropriate two hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars to pay the cost of the library for a total of two hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars as shown in the Finance Committee booklet.
Seconded.
I have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? All those, oh, go ahead.
Debbie, and this is James Street. I was just wondering, that was what Phil was saying about the concerts that would be there. I'm thinking of culture and recreation. I'm thinking of culture and music and all. I am wondering if something could be good in there at some point next year or something, so we could have some of the concerts up here, because I just was understanding that they're not here because of some of the police stuff, and I don't know, I just think that's part of culture. I could be wrong. The question is, could someone look at that?
Mr. Irvin.
According to Mr. Hubbard's question, the biggest thing I believe right now that is being called the concerts down in South Berry Common is the condition of the gazebo. The concerts that were up in Barry Common were traditionally held on the gazebo. People would be around the gazebo seating. The condition of that gazebo is no longer safe, so it's been moved to South Berry until it's not restated. It's not just about police details and other things. We're working through that, and I think we started finding a resolution on that via funding, things like the cultural and recreational line item that can help pay for details or others, but when it comes to the actual discipline installation, that's our holdup right now.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Human Services.
Mr. Moderator, I'm voting against the agreement. I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars to pay for the cost of metro benefits, to raise an appropriate eighty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars to pay for the cost of council maintenance, a total of one hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars as shown in the Finance Committee booklet.
Seconded.
I have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Insurance and Benefits.
Ruggles Sullivan, School Street North. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate eight hundred, two thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars to pay the cost of insurance and benefits as shown in the Finance Committee booklet.
Seconded.
I have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Maturing Debt and Interest.
Dylan Clark, Long Hill Road. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate, appropriate four hundred seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars, transfer from eighty-three thousand, ninety-one dollars from sewer retained earnings, transfer thirty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars from water retained earnings for a total of five hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars to pay the cost of maturing debt and interest as shown in the Finance Committee booklet.
Seconded.
I have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Central Purchasing.
Mr. Moderator, Mad Ervin, Williamsville Road. Article twenty-one, Omnibus Budget, Central Purchasing. I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate eighty-one thousand to pay the cost of central purchasing as shown in the Finance Committee booklet.
Seconded.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. Reserve Fund.
Regal Sullivan School, Street North. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate ten thousand dollars to the Reserve Fund, as shown in the Finance Committee booklet.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. Montechusick Technical School.
William Marshall, Laurine Road. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate four hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars to pay the cost of Montechusick Technical School, as shown in the Finance Committee booklet.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Sam Lifson, West Street. Uh, regarding the school budgets, this budget seems to increase thirty-nine percent when the other school budgets only increased for this writing, four percent, two percent, and I'd like to understand why the significant, to get what the significance of the thirty-nine percent represented. Thank you.
So, if you look at the difference, um, during the fiscal year, um, two thousand nineteen, Montech had forty-four students from Berry, and in the coming year, there will be sixty more students from Berry. So, the primary reason for the increase is the increase in students.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. Quavon Regional School District.
Sheila Muir, twenty-three Murphy Road. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate five million six hundred seventy-nine thousand five hundred and eighty dollars to pay the costs of the Quavon Regional School District, as shown in the Finance Committee booklet.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. We're going to call your attention to the fact that one of the selectmen voted against this, the other two were favorable, so the board was favorable. Any discussion? Mr. Lifson.
Regal Sullivan, School, Street, North. I am the, uh, the sending vote of the select board to this topic. There's a great deal of discussion between the five towns in the school district, and between the select boards and administrators, um, administrators in those towns. Uh, about a month and a half ago, the town of Hubbardston had, um, altered their budget and put their amount of this allocation maybe towards that, but they couldn't afford it. And they've asked the other town to support them, and asked them to, and they lowered budget number, which we all did, and at the time, this board had agreed to make that request for a lower number. The school has lowered their budget considerably to that number. Um, and Hubbardston, I believe, passed a number closer to what their request was in their town. And I, given my support to Hubbardston, that I would support this lower figure, and that's why I'm opposing this budget. Still not the lower figure that we had requested, and I'm still hoping that we'll be down there. I believe we have, only one town has failed this budget so far, or two towns have failed the budget. So there's got to be some rediscussion on this before it's done. Um, I originally intended to propose a lower number myself tonight, closer to the dissent we'd requested the school do, but since the town of Hubbardston has already put a lower number up there and approved it at their town, I'm not going to mix that with a third number. So I'm just going to stay against this proposed budget number myself as it is, and make no other recommendations.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed?
No.
The motion carries. Q R H S Debt Service.
Sheila Muir, twenty-three Murphy Road. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate fifty-two thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars to pay the costs of the Quavon Regional High School Debt Service, as shown in the Finance Committee booklet.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. We finished the unanimous topic. We are moving on to Article twenty-two.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate seven hundred and forty-seven thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars for anticipated sewer receipts for the operation and maintenance of the municipal sewer system, as shown in the Finance Committee booklet.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. Article twenty-three, Water Enterprise Fund.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate five hundred and twenty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars for the anticipated water receipts for the operation and maintenance of the municipal water department, as shown in the Finance Committee booklet.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. Article twenty-four, Transfer Stabilization.
Dylan Clark, Monahill Road. Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move to have the town vote to transfer fifty thousand dollars from free cash to stabilization.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. Article twenty-five is to amend the Code of the Town of Berry, Chapter eighty-four. This is based on a citizen petition from Mary Jane Bade.
Thank you for the signatures. Mr. Moderator, I move to amend. Speak up.
Just get really close to the, uh, get really close to the microphone.
I move to amend the Code of the Town of Berry, Chapter eighty, peace and good order. Peace and good order. By amending Chapter eighty-four, ball-playing, throwing stones, by adding to the existing sentence, no person shall be allowed to play the basketball hoop or game net in such a manner, and I to play ball, or throw like any missile-like objects in and upon the public street of Trafalgar Square. This is a...
That's it.
Peace and good order.
So, there's the motion. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Moved in second, I have the, uh, motion. There's a slight difference from what's printed in the Finance Committee booklet, the way that she said the motion is what is being discussed here on the floor. So moved in seconded, is there any discussion? Mr. Lifson.
Sam Lifson, West Street. This, this article has come before this group many years, and there's been some confusion as to what it is and what it isn't, who it's going to affect and who it is going to affect. Perhaps we can get the chief of police up, and maybe he can explain some of the issues related to this. I would like to give this chairman ladies some support, uh, only because she's been living here for so many years, and it appears that that particular area has grieved her, and I think we need to, uh, support our townspeople. Thank you.
Chief, do you care to speak?
I have a question.
Don't know that there was a question. Is there any further discussion? You can make a case if you want to.
There was a, um, the safety was a problem, um, in this article, so I just took that out, um, which is, this is just a peace and good order. We have peace and good order in your town, but I live in the section where for you have about twenty families, and you have, um, a basketball hoop that is placed nearly across the street from me, and it's a tight area. The echoing of, dribbling of the ball is, it doesn't go anywhere, the sound just stays there, it goes into your house, the echoing comes into your home, and into your bedroom, and, um, just try to speak to the people about it, and I get nowhere. The absentee landlords are not helpful, um, I've called the police down, um, we need, I think, a little respect and common courtesy, I'm asking for that. Um, there's just so many families in this small area, the Trafalgar Square has changed a lot, and the people that live there, they're quite different, it isn't like it used to be in the Berry world. These homes are, um, tenants, they come and they go, and, um, I'm the only owner occupied one that is left. It's not like, um, Church Street, where for you have some areas where you don't hear the noise as much. But this is a portable hoop, and I ask, just if you could move it from one side of the Trafalgar Square, or to the other, where they don't mind it, or where the noises and the echoes can be dismissed, dissipated, um, I can't remember. So I just ask for some help, to the noise, and the, I know trespassing signs are ignored, they come into my, um, my land, the balls bounce off of the, um, backboard, and, um, the parents, just send the children out there, the parents themselves are throwing the balls on top of the grills, and then they just laugh, they say, well, I told you it hit the grill. It, uh, it just, uh, the respect is just not there. And, um, if you all got this booklet in the mail, or in the Berry Gazette, Charlie Publications, it shows that in a park, or a field, is where these basketball hoops belong. Trafalgar Square is a through street, it's a public way, it's a through street, it's not fenced in, and it's, uh, it's very difficult to live there these days. I ask for your help, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion's defeated. Okay, um, before we start into these next five articles, I want to give you a little bit of roadmap of what's going on here. So the first thing we're going to talk about is a licensing by law. So a licensing by law is the set of regulations that the selectmen would enforce for marijuana establishments of various types, growers, retailers, whatever. Then the next three articles regard zoning. At the time they were put onto the warrant, the first two of those were identical. There's no reason for a town to discuss the same thing twice, so I'm just giving you a heads up that Article twenty-eight, the only motion I'm going to accept on that would be a motion to take no action. So we're going to talk about Article twenty-seven, and we can have a full and vigorous debate about that. The motion, amendments, the whole, whole deal. Nothing's happening on Article twenty-eight. And then Article twenty-nine is considerably different, so, uh, when we get there, that's going to be a whole nother discussion, and, uh, how we deal with having multiple, uh, bylaws that cover the same issue. Um, I have a strategy to deal with that, but exactly what strategy I use depends upon what happens with Article twenty-seven, so wait and see on that one. And then finally, there's Article thirty, which is a moratorium, which as you've heard, we passed at the previous town meeting and was never approved by the Attorney General, so we technically don't have a moratorium right now. Um, and this would be an attempt to put another moratorium on. So that's what we're going to be talking about. The first one is the Marijuana Licensing Bylaw, Article twenty-six.
Madam Hubbard, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Williamsville Road. I'd like to make a motion for Article twenty-six. I move that the town vote to amend the Code of the Town of Berry by inserting a new section, one sixty, marijuana establishment licensing, as it appears in the Finance Committee booklet as Appendix A.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second.
Furthermore, non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Code of Berry.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. Um, I'm not expecting you to, uh, read Appendix A at this time. If you're interested in this, this has been published for a long time, and there have been hearings, so if you have questions that arise from those hearings, if there's things you want to raise, feel free, but we're not going to wait twenty minutes for you to read the bylaw. Is there discussion? Mr. Hubbard?
This thing, the one thing I'd like to state regarding this general bylaw and the role that the Board of Selectmen plays in the regulation of marijuana establishments in this town. Um, it starts with what the state gave the Board of Selectmen the power of, which is a host community agreement. Um, there have been various sources going around stating that the lack of zoning bylaw means that the town actually is unprotected and cannot prevent uncontrolled growth of marijuana establishments in town. That is absolutely wrong. Every developer that's interested in marijuana establishments in this town will have to come to the Board of Selectmen and negotiate and get an approved host community agreement with the Board of Selectmen before they can even go to the state and request a license, and then come back to the planning board and act on any zoning bylaw that may come in place. There is no requirement by the state for any Board of Selectmen to come to an agreement. The requirement is the developer has to meet the Board of Selectmen's requirements to reach an agreement. So I just wanted to put that out there, so people understand the role the Board of Selectmen plays in this process, and maybe clarify some of the misinformation that has been distributed throughout the town.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Simple majority was needed for that one. Article twenty-seven, the first version of the Marijuana Establishment Zoning Bylaw, which comes from the planning board. from the Planning Board.
Douglas Martin, Sheldon Road. Mr. Moderator, I move with the town vote to amend the code of the Town of Barry zoning, Chapter 140, by inserting a new section, 140-11.2, Adult Marijuana and Marijuana Establishments as it appears in the Finance Committee booklet as Appendix B. Furthermore, non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Code of Barry.
It's been moved and seconded. As a zoning bylaw, we are required to hear the report of the Planning Board.
Douglas Martin, Sheldon Road. Planning Board recommends favorable for Article 27.
Do you know the date of the hearing that you?
No, I do not.
The Finance Committee recommended unfavorable action on this. Does the Finance, does someone from the Finance Committee want to speak for that committee? Nope. Uh, the Board of Selectmen recommended unfavorable action. Does someone from the Board of Selectmen want to speak for that board?
Mr. Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Williamsville Road. Simply, it just comes down to the fact that we believe that after the last special town meeting, um, the Board of Selectmen recognized a request on the floor at the special town meeting for us to create a Marijuana Bylaw Review Committee, um, to help the town get more involved in bridging some gaps where there was some differing opinions between the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board and various members of the community. We, uh, we did create that. We did balance, in our opinion, that committee with people from what would be considered both sides of the subject. They came up, they presented certain recommendations from both the boards. I believe generally, and I would let the other members speak for themselves, but generally the idea was we did not feel like the Planning Board, uh, accepted the recommendation of the Marijuana Bylaw Review Committee and I think simply what we felt that that is why we're unfavorable.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir. No, no, the guy in the hat. I called on you first, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator.
Please, put your, get real close to the microphone.
Greg Warren, South Berry Road. The planning board has taken many of the recommendations of the Marijuana Bylaw Review Committee, which has been merged into the Planning Board's Marijuana Bylaw proposed here tonight. The Planning Board has worked with the only proposed marijuana facility in town of Barry, located on Burnham, with two exemptions for my bylaw so that their project may succeed. In watching this election last night on Table 194, it was very disappointing and discouraging to hear the following comments. A 15-minute discussion took place on how to strip the Planning Board's Marijuana Bylaw at the town meeting. They suggested to vote to remove all parts of the Planning Board's Marijuana Bylaw except for the definition section. The selectmen stated that they do not want the Planning Board to be the special permit granting authority, while the Planning Board already is coming to...
You'll have an opportunity to rebut the things that he says. Go ahead.
Per Barry's zoning code, Chapter 140-30, Section A, states, "Planning Board shall be designated as special permit granting authority." It is one thing for the select board not to agree and offer an unfavorable recommendation but not to conduct an open meeting and discuss how to undermine the elected board, which is to put a nicely disgraced man. Thank you.
Mr. Urban, do you want to add anything to the said?
We had a very lengthy, very lengthy discussion yesterday while we're doing our review of the warrant articles, um, so that the board could make our votes for recommendations on each article you've been listening to tonight and the ones that will still come. Marijuana has been a heavy topic. The town is very close to being a 50-50 split generally when we come across and present these to the public to find out how we can get certain bylaws passed. We've had a lot of input from various individuals, whether it's the Planning Board, the Board of Selectmen, or even the Bylaw Review Committee. Well, one of the biggest things that I would like to clarify about what was just presented here is what we did was we questioned why they chose to write a bylaw that creates the need for special permit granting authority to be applied to it versus just a flat bylaw like other zoning bylaws that sets certain standards and if you meet it, you just move forward. We have heard, some of us, and I will speak for myself, not necessarily every other board member of those involved in the discussion last night, but many times if you review and you see what the Cannabis Commission has been stating, they see this as something that should be regulated much more closely to alcohol establishments. And if you look at our zoning bylaws, there's not one special permit granting authority requirement for somebody to open up a package store or open up a restaurant and sell liquor. So what we were talking about last night and questioning was why does the Planning Board think this requires a special permit process versus just a prescribed zoning bylaw? Not whether it was their authority to be a special permit granting authority, as it is clearly written in the town's bylaw that that is your role. We are not trying to take that role from you. We are questioning why you're applying it to this specific zoning bylaw. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Before we proceed, I just want to check something that you just said. He made a comment about what's in the zoning bylaw. I just want to make sure he was accurate and it looks to me like he was. Yes.
Douglas Sullivan, School Street North. A lot of the comments he's referring to came from my mouth last night. In our discussion about the bylaws, people that attended our meeting asked us why we opposed it. I specifically stated that I didn't like the restrictions. As the Planning Board has sent this forth between a 500-foot distance from homes and a three-acre required lot size, it comes down to one lot in this town that would be available, which really zones it out of town. And I'm concerned that if they were granted special permit granting authority over every marijuana permit, that there would be none ever issued in town. Their right to issue a special permit would be if somebody has an existing lot that has prescribed use and they want to do something on their land outside of that prescribed use. The bylaws are allowed for them to hear the request for a special permit to use that lot outside of the conformed use. When we create the Marijuana Bylaws, the intent is to create a zoning where marijuana establishments are allowed. Therefore, there should be no requirement to have a special permit to operate a business in a zone where it is already allowed. There, the bylaw also covers regulatory portions for this business, such as odor, sound, and things of that nature. They intend to be the regulating and enforcing authority, according to the bylaw, on those issues. These things typically go to the border health if they're with odor and other problems and if they're in destruction, they go to the building department. There's already regulatory establishments in town that deal with that end of it, so I felt that portions of this were very over grasped. So my comment, it was to, hey, someone could strip this down and keep the definitions and things that the town agrees on. Pick a starting point for a Marijuana zoning bylaw that everybody agrees to. It may be rudimentary, it may be far from complete, but it's something we could pass and something that would pass the state's scrutiny afterwards. From that point, any of these individual portions could be brought back at any special or town meeting and added to that to amend in the future. I think it's very important we walk away tonight with some sort of bylaw intact. And if that means we have to strip this down, that we have definitions defining indoor and outdoor and what's open to allow it and nothing more, I'm happy with that because we have a law in effect that we can live with. I'm not happy to see special permitting required for every marijuana applicant in this town. The requirements that the selectway has set forth in our host agreement are stringent and they take the best interest of the town and the parties involved. And there will be no free rein of marijuana in this town, I guarantee you that. We already restrict numbers, how many establishments can be here, and there's a lot of things they have to do, which you will comply with the wishes of this Planning Board before they get to agree with us. It's not meant to totally strip away their efforts. They have put hundreds, if not thousands, of hours in to this and I acknowledge that. I still am very firmly against portions of it and I have said so publicly. I stand here and tell them that, they're angry with me and I understand that. That's what I believe and that's what I believe is right for the town. And I believe getting something in the books that will pass the state scrutiny later, that we can have a base to build on in the future for Marijuana Bylaws, I think is important.
So let me just, a couple of legal terms being thrown around here, I want to make sure everyone understands what they mean. So in our zoning bylaw, there are things that you're permitted to do by right and then there are things that you, that require a special permit. You're allowed to do them, but the Planning Board has to give you permission. What Mr. Sullivan described, where you're doing something that's different than what's allowed on your property, that's called a variance. That's not a special permit and that's done by a completely different board called the Zoning Board of Appeals. So a special permit is a normal course of business for things that are permitted within our zoning bylaw. Just so everybody knows what the words mean that are being tossed around here. So, is there more discussion? Yes, sir.
Douglas Martin, Sheldon Road. I'd like to respond to the comments by Board of Selectmen, Mr. Urban, and start off with, he said that we made no changes to our existing bylaw based upon what the Marijuana Bylaw Committee did, and that's simply not true, okay? The Marijuana Bylaw Committee was formed by the Board of Selectmen. The Planning Board was not invited to participate in that process. We had no input into it and we had no knowledge of it. Now, when the Marijuana Bylaw Committee produced their bylaw, their recommendations, we met with them. We looked at the differences between our bylaw and theirs and we made some changes at that time. The Marijuana Bylaw Committee found some inconsistencies in our bylaw, we changed those. They found some other things that were duplications and we changed those. And we changed a few other things as well. After that point, I met with the town administrator who developed a table of looking at the differences between the Planning Board bylaw and the Marijuana Committee bylaw and we sat down and went through those changes and we made some additional changes. So to say that we made no changes to what, because of what the Marijuana Bylaw Committee did is simply not true. Second, you've heard the statement that there's only one place in town where you can, you can put one of these facilities. Again, that is simply not true. Now, there are very limited number of acres of business commercial and industrial in the Town of Barry. It's somewhere around 400 acres. There are locations where they meet the criteria of what the Planning Board has developed, okay? But they have something on them. Now, are there any pristine pieces of property that are empty, that are for sale for cheap? No, there are not. But there are properties in the Town of Barry, and I can demonstrate what those properties are with the help from the Planning Board, whereby you can put one of these facilities. It meets the requirements. Now, most of these facilities have something on it, but they don't cover the entire facility. You can use a piece of these. They're acreages. Old Town has 47 acres. You could put an indoor grow facility there, you could put a marijuana retailer there by acquiring part of that property. Also, there are numbers of properties, dozens and dozens in town that are zoned business commercial, that are one acre, a half acre, uh, two or three acres. We did not look in those in detail because they were smaller properties. Again, though, if someone wants to look at those properties, there may be a way to acquire two or three or four and it would meet the criteria for these, uh, that we've established in the Planning Board bylaw.
Chris Higgins, West Street. Just want to make a public comment on this as far as the zoning. So just want to provide some data to what will happen if this bylaw is passed. As far as the industrially zoned property, there's 15 industrially zoned properties that I see as have the potential to be used. Of those 15, nine do not qualify for indoor cultivation, including that they're less than three acres. Of those six, two are within 500 feet to a residence. None of those two are also within 500 feet to, and also two of those are close to a church. One has a house on it at the indoor ceiling behind Allen's Foundry and two are currently being used by cultivation by the United Boys. That leaves two properties. Allen's Foundry would either have to be shut down or perform indoor cultivation, or they would have to create a new parcel perhaps in the front field of the building. Palmer Paving could be used if, again, they shut down the paving plant or created a new parcel with a new entrance and was put up in the back away from the residences. So if this bylaw passes as presented, it would eliminate 87% of the industrially zoned property in town for indoor cultivation. Now, there's talk of reducing to 500 to 100 foot. If the distance is reduced to 100 feet, it would open up one more location for indoor, indoor cultivation. Now, for all of the uses, we are again restricted by the 500-foot off road to residents, of those 15, four of them are outside of the 500-foot zone. 200 foot, two of those are currently being used by the United Boys. This, again, 87% lost of industrially zoned lots in town. As far as business commercial property, there are 74 business commercial lots in Barry. Six are owned by the Town of Barry, one is owned by the Commonwealth of Mass. Four of those are owned by the churches or cemeteries, that leaves 64 business commercial lots. Eleven are multi-use buildings, for example, the building that the Red Tomato is in, the building that Kicks by Amanda is in, Jamie Pharmacy, Dunkin' Donuts, Athol Savings Bank. That leaves 53 lots. Four of those are within 500 feet to the library. One is within 500 feet to a playground. One is a piece of a parking lot where the old gas station was by Dunkin' Donuts. It's useless. Remove the remaining three in the very common, now we're down to 47 lots. Remove the South Barry common lots, there's another nine, we're down to 38. Out of the 38, 34 of those are within 500 feet to a residence. The remaining four that have land that could potentially use, that is one 500 feet for, has land that could be used 500 feet away from the residence, is Higgins and what he referenced as Boulder Town, I'm calling Rockworks. So that leaves lane, storage units and the house next to Lear's. The buildings that are on Higgins' property in Rockworks are both within 100 feet of residences, so those buildings could not be used, they have to be with new buildings built. The main storage unit is 1.5 acres and the three acre minimum eliminates that. That leaves that one lot in town. The house is between Lear Home Center and New Falls. If it was torn down, it could be potentially there. Now, if the 500-foot minimum is reduced to 100 feet, that opens up 18 more lots. However, two of those are eliminated because they're within 500 feet of church. Of 16, six are under one acre and four are under... Of 16, six are under one acre, and four are under three acres. One of those lots is behind Baldwin Plaza, basically a useless lot. Lots, these five lots, plus Higgins and Rockworks that I talked about, reduce to seven lots total. If this bylaw passes as read, you will eliminate 99% of the business commercial properties in town, leaving only one location. If the town agrees to only reduce the distances from 500 feet to 100 feet, you'll still restrict 90.5% of the available business commercial lots in town for indoor cultivation. And if you reduce to 100 feet, it will still eliminate 73% of the available business commercial lots for all other uses.
Thank you. Is there more discussion? I've already thought, let me see if there's somebody. It hasn't. Way in the back, can you come forward, please?
The Planning Board has worked for the last year and a half on their bylaws. They've taken bylaws from every area of Massachusetts, and they put it together with what they could do for a year and a half, plus everything else they had to do under planning. In December, when we had the special town meeting concerning this issue, it only failed by .667. It was failed by less than one vote. Because remember, it needs a two-thirds majority vote. So I just ask you now to look at, the subcommittee was formed. Two people from, who worked for Dean Iain Doley were on that subcommittee, offering their ideas. Chris Higgins was there, offering his ideas. Nicker and I were there, offering our concerns and our ideas concerning the value we place on children and the value we place on our Town of Berry and the quality of life we want in our Town of Berry. Recommendations were made, and an incredible amount of work was done by that subcommittee. They're incredible people to work with, they did a great job. Recommendations were made and given to the Planning Board. Planning Board worked between themselves and with Andrew to look at exactly what was going on for these issues, and they reduced many of the things that they had under their original bylaws. Last week, after that was done, Andrew then met last week with some Planning Board and with Dean Iain Doley because of some of the more concerns he had concerning his particular property. And if you look on page 34 of the Planning Board, they put that paragraph that Dean needed for and wanted for his property into the Planning Board bylaw to take care of and to help Dean out as a businessman in the Town of Berry. The final plan we have here is a reasonable plan. Even Dr. Egan, who was looking to do outdoor cultivation along the Hill Road, he even said he could have worked with the original one that was back in December. He didn't have a problem working with the original bylaw, never the one, never mind the one that's been changed now, to try to work your business and try to help everyone out. We have only one retail store that we're looking at. I know that Nicker and I looked at the fact that we didn't want retail on the three town commons, and we wanted to work with the residences and make sure that it wasn't near them. The bottom line is, as always, when you're looking at a bylaw, you assume that you've done the best that you can do and you pass it on to the Attorney General. Obviously, the Attorney General is very busy, especially with the Cannabis Commission, because they haven't even finished the December situations that were going on. But they look at these bylaws and they decide some parts of it need to be tweaked. It's happened for all the years that I've been in town meetings. They come back and say some things need to be tweaked, and then a town would do that if something was not particularly correct with the bylaw. Much has been done by many groups. This bylaw is reasonable. We have worked with the business community. The Town of Berry needs a reasonable bylaw. This is it.
Can you adjust the microphone so that it can be side-blank? Thank you.
Hi. Hillary Bedrow, Washburn Road. I note that we amend the motion by deleting the words residential dwellings in Section G, subsection 2, F, and inserting in its place residential programs in Section G2F, and create a new subsection, G2FI, to insert except for residential, which setback shall be 100 feet.
I have a motion, I have a motion and a second to amend. Can I have that copied? So just so everyone knows what's going on, this is a, a motion to amend the language that's in the back of, of your book in Appendix B. Article 27. Article 27, which is Appendix B, correct? So I have a, a motion and a second. Can you briefly explain what this change does?
Yeah, so I was actually on Marijuana Bylaw Committee. So one of the things that was really important to me was that we took care of people who are in recovery. So that means, or people who have disabilities and are in group homes. That wasn't in there. People like steps in. I think that's really important, and that's why we wanted group homes in there. But the 500 feet is really restrictive. 100 is still really restrictive, so it's kind of popping in, saying, hey, we want to take care of places like steps in and make sure we're far enough away from it, but it's also saying, hey, we know we're still being restrictive, can we just take one small step back, one slight restriction? It's still restrictive, it's still very restrictive. I believe the numbers are more than going to 23%, so it's still not very open.
Any discussion of this amendment? Yes, sir.
I'd just like to raise, Cannabis Commission's position is that these zoning bylaws cannot be overly burdensome on the developer, and based on the description of how they identified potential lots by people actually going through the process of splitting their lots in order to open up space without having to remove existing business which is already contributing to our community, they would have to take the time to pay for surveyor, go through the process to get an A and R plan approved, before they actually can make it to the state to get a license, which then allows them to come to the Planning Board via a special permit granting authority with no commitment that they actually will get the special permit granted. Having to split your lot and/or abandon existing business in order to see is the question...
Mr. Urban, we're discussing the amendment.
I...
You are not discussing the amendment.
Yes, I am.
Please get to the point.
The reason I'm bringing that up is this amendment reduces restrictions, it opens a number of available lots compared to that which is presented by the plan.
Thank you. Further discussion of the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed to the amendment?
No.
The motion carries. We now proceed to, back to discussing the amended motion. Yes.
I move that we amend the motion to delete Section I of Section C in its entirety. Yes, Section C and subsection I.
That's it?
Yes.
Do we have a second? Hang, hang, hang on. No, no, we're not, we're not yelling questions. Do I have a second on this amendment? Thank you. Is there any discussion of the amendment? Perhaps you could explain to us what it is.
The reason that I'm asking for it to be deleted, sorry, the reason that I'm asking for it to be deleted is because it's a redundant section, which is already stated in the Board of Selectmen laws.
Just so everyone knows, the motion was to delete Section I of Section C in its entirety.
Page 38.
I'm told it's on page 38. Is there any more discussion of this amendment? Yes, sir.
Dr. Smarten Sheldon Road. If I understand correctly, we're deleting Section I...
L, L.
Sorry.
Lowercase L looks like an I in here. Section L.
Okay. Section L deals with odor and ventilation abatement plan. This was mainly aimed at indoor cultivation. There are problems with odors that have come up in indoor cultivation across the country. That's why this is in here. I can't imagine any reason to take that out for any good reason that would benefit the Town of Berry.
Any more discussion of the amendment? Nicker.
I'm just confused, sorry. I'm still trying to figure out which part we're taking out. Is this the odor and ventilation abatement plan? Is that... Yes.
I'm told yes.
Okay, so one of the biggest concerns that everybody in town had when they talked about marijuana was that they didn't want to smell it all out, all throughout town. So if this is a way to make that so there's less of a concern, then I don't understand why it needs to be taken out. It was definitely one of the things that has been discussed at every single public hearing that I've attended, and I've attended almost all of them, that one of our big concerns, especially when it comes to cultivation, is the smell. So to take out how it would be abated, so that when we're discussing it at the, when it comes to the town, that somebody would be looking for a permit, that they would have to explain how they were planning to deal with the smell prior to it being built, seems like it would be a no-brainer to keep that in.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Nigal Landen, Old Park Road, about a 20-minute walk from the Stone County. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to briefly just read an article on this interview.
How long?
We're kind of dealing with a picking of poke here because when you talk about odors, I mean, I don't think anybody in this room has lived next to a legal marijuana farm, or if they can, it would be great for them if they could speak of the odor. But there are others, especially in the states of California and Colorado, who have been involved in this kind of thing before us, and, and they have had some experiences. So if you'll allow me to do this briefly, this was an article from the New York Times about October of last year, and the title is "Near California, Pot Farms They Can Barely Hear." They call it fresh skunk, the odor cloud, or sometimes just the stench. Mike Mundalowski often finds himself in the middle of it. He may be in the chaise lounge in his patio, at his computer in the house, or attending to his orange and lemon trees in the garden, when the powerful nauseating stench descends on him. He lives a half mile away from greenhouses that were originally built to grow daisies and chrysanthemums, but now house thousands of marijuana plants, part of a booming and pungent business, which has been legal in California since January of 17. If someone is saying, is it really that bad? I'll go find a bunch of skunks, and every evening I'll put them outside your window, Mundalowski said. It's just brutal. When Californians voted to legalize recreational marijuana in 2016, there were debates about driving under the influence and keeping it away from children. But lawmakers did not anticipate the uproar that would be generated by the funk of millions of flowering cannabis plants. As a result of this stench, residents in Sonoma County, north of San Francisco, are suing to ban cannabis operations from their neighborhoods. Mendocino County, further north, recently created zones banning cannabis cultivation. The sheriff's deputy there says the stench is the number one complaint. In Santa Barbara County, cannabis growers confronting the rage of neighbors are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars installing odor control systems that were originally designed for garbage dumps. The smell from commercial cannabis farms, which brings to mind a mixture of erotic lemons and sulfur, is nothing like a little cloud that might hover over a Phish concert.
Sir, I think we get the point. I, I think...
I could drive it home for her.
You, you made a type, I think we can move on to someone else. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Ralph Rogers, Spring Hill Road. I am the chairperson of the Marijuana Bylaw Committee, and I want to say that odor was a huge topic of discussion. I spent many hours researching how other communities dealt with odor, because it is impactful. I reached out to Denver to understand how they dealt with odor. Reached out to Oregon to understand how they dealt with, Oregon, to understand how they're dealing with odor. Not a single one of them was regulated for odor with their planning board. It was Board of Health. In our licensing bylaw that we just passed, in that bylaw, we just gave the Board of Selectmen the right, the ability, the duty, to handle all of the complaints that come up for odor. I guess I would have a question, is do, this bylaw that was passed, that's supposed to regulate the odor surrounding campus, if we keep it in the Planning Board's bylaw, which one of the services is the other? We've already voted, we gave it to the Board of Selectmen, it needs to be taken out of the Planning Board's.
Any more discussion on this amendment? Yes. Yeah, I need you to step over to the microphone.
Page 30, number 15. Send it out.
Page 30, number 15. She's just clarifying for people what we're talking about. Hearing no more discussion, I'm taking a vote on the amendment. That's all we're voting on, is whether to amend this. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I'm going to need my tellers. All those in favor of the amendment, please stand. Actually, I don't need my tellers. Could everyone, everyone sit down? Everyone opposed to the amendment, please stand. The motion is defeated. Just to let everybody know, we can save a lot of time if you don't shout your yays and nays, if you simply use a normal voice. Being the loudest isn't what makes you win. Is there any more discussion of the main motion? Sir.
Dr. Smarten Sheldon Road. One more thing I'd like to add. Kathy Enba talked about what the Planning Board's done, the amount of work we've done. It's our job to do that, and we've done it, and we, we looked at lots of bylaws from all over the country. all over the country. We, uh, we went to seminars, we read the state regs, we got help from different groups in Massachusetts, and we crafted this bylaw based on that. But most importantly, most important thing we did, we had two public hearings in Berry. Citizens of Berry came to those hearings. We had people that were pro-marijuana and people that were anti-marijuana. And like the vote in Berry, it was roughly split about fifty-fifty. And we listened to all those concerns, and we took that into account when we drafted this bylaw. But we also heard there, and we heard this, and this was pretty much unanimous, people said, "We don't want a marijuana retail establishment on the common. We don't want it next to a school. And we don't want it next to a residence." And that's why this restriction is in there of five hundred feet. Now, you heard, it does restrict the amount of property you can put it on, but Berry has very little business commercial and industrial land to begin with in those zoning classifications. That's something that the Planning Board tends to deal with down the road. We think in order to attract industry to town and businesses to town, we need additional acreage that are in those classifications. That's something we're gonna do. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chuck Raddler, Old Hollywood Road. Mr. Moderator, I know we voted down the last amendment, but I don't think I've really heard an answer to the competing jurisdictions. If we go ahead and pass this article as written, then it looks as though, from the vote earlier this evening, the Selectmen are empowered to deal with odor. And yet, if we pass this article as written, the Planning Board is empowered to deal with undesirable odors. I'm wondering if anybody, I, I heard a question previously that I didn't hear answered, and that is, given that hierarchy, who's in charge? Do you think we could find an answer to that before we move on this article?
Thank you. Could someone from the Planning Board tell us whether the, on an issue like odor, is your work strictly before the use is allowed, or would your work continue after the fact once they're in operation?
Douglas Martin, Sheldon Road. My understanding is we have adopted these criteria for odor and odor abatement. Any business in town has to meet that criteria. If there's an issue with it, it goes to the Board of Health. The Planning Board is not an enforcement agency. Most of the zoning bylaws, the requirements of the zoning bylaws, the enforcement agent is the building inspector. But for something like odor, it would be the Board of Health. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
It's a acre of Sullivan School Street North. Just to follow up on what was just stated, under Section L, Part Five, the Planning Board, along with the Board of Health, will investigate this.
Sir, any more discussion of the main motion? No more amendments? Yes, sir?
Tom Dunn, if you've cut off the road. I'd like to move to that we amend the motion by changing the words three acres in section S. Change the words three acres in section E three, B two. Two words, one acre. So that it now reads a minimum lot size of twenty acres is required in the R eighty zone, and one acre in industrial zone.
I have a motion and a second. Is it clear to everyone what this amendment does? Could you step over to the microphone and explain to people what this amendment does?
So, to change the minimum lot size in the current zone, or the zoning regulations the Planning Board has suggested, from three acres as the minimum lot size to one acre in industrial zone, where we're not talking about our backyards, we're talking about properties that are already have the right to do, you could put a paint factory there if you wanted to. But we're saying that you now need three acres in order to put indoor cannabis growth or something along those lines.
Does this apply to both indoor and outdoor, or only to indoor?
Industrial use property.
Mr. Urban?
I'm requesting clarification on the motion.
Yes.
Referring to E's and B's.
Yes. E, the number three, B is in void, two.
That being specific to outdoor cultivation or?
That's the outdoor cultivation.
C three is specifically needed. So, the seventh?
So, this amendment is strictly changing the lot size for outdoor cultivation in the industrial zone, according to Mr. Urban, in the industrial zone. All right. Any more discussion of this amendment? All those in favor of this amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to this amendment?
No.
Let's go to the standing. All those in favor of this amendment, please stand. Give me a minute. Please sit. All those opposed to the amendment, please stand. Motion's defeated. We're back to the main motion. Um, the, can, uh, the guy who just made that motion, that, that motion for amendment, can you just repeat your name, please?
Tom Dunn. Tom Dunn.
So, we're back to the main motion. I believe only one amendment has passed so far. Is there any more discussion or amendments? Seeing none, we're going to move to the vote. This is a zoning article, therefore requires a two-thirds vote. I know it's gonna be close, so we're just gonna go straight to the tellers. So, just so everybody knows what we're voting, is there a point of order? Okay, um, there's been a motion to fix the form of voting to secret ballot. I guess I'm gonna call that in order. It would be better to have done that earlier before we were about to vote on this, but I guess we can do that. We can consider your motion. So, before we move forward, we're going to take a vote on whether to fix the form of voting to secret ballot. This is a Berry bylaw that says that we need ten percent of the voters in favor to fix the form of voting. So, those in favor of doing the vote on Article twenty-seven by secret ballot, please stand. Anyone done standing? Kathy, are you standing? Okay, thank you. That wasn't a joke about your height, buddy.
Now it is.
Please sit. Yeah, that's gonna be ten percent, no matter how many votes go. So, um, we're gonna do this by secret ballot, so... So, you all have a collection of ballots. We're gonna use the top one, which is green. You can tear that right off the top of your stack. There's a yes part and a no part. You're gonna tear that in half and pick one for the other. If you're voting yes, that means that you want to adopt this zoning bylaw as amended. If you're voting no, it means you don't want to. And we need two-thirds of the people voting in order for this to pass. So, I'm gonna give my town clerk a minute to get ready, and I'll let you know when it's time to start coming forward with your ballots. It's not time yet.
Okay, what we're gonna do is, as we've always done in the past, we're gonna form two lines. The ballot that we're gonna use for this vote will be your green yes/no slip. So, for anyone that has not voted at a town meeting before, you're simply gonna rip off either the yes or the no, however you wanna vote. We're gonna form two lines. We'll go by the first. Few growers to come down, put your ballot of your choice in the box on both sides, and then turn around and go back to your seats. When we're finished, after everybody has voted, we will have our counters empty the boxes and count, um, and the moderator will announce it. Everyone's hand will be stamped, their right hand will be stamped after they've deposited their ballot into the box, so nobody can vote twice. So, again, we're only using the green slip, and if we can start with the first five rows on, all right, if we could start with our Select Board and our Finance Committee, go through and do your votes first. Mr. Moderator, you wanna vote? Mary, did let's go vote? And then we're gonna call the, like, the first five rows on each side, just form two lines and come up and go ahead and cast your ballots. Then we'll go to the next five rows on each side, come forward. And everyone else can just follow line.
By the way, you're gonna, you're gonna be awesome. Oh, yeah, you're gonna be. But you're gonna be awesome. Come on.
And then we're gonna call the, like, the first five rows on each side, just form two lines and come up and go ahead and cast your ballots. And we'll go to the next five rows on each side, come forward. Ladies and gentlemen, please return to your seats.
We have the count. The yeas, 124; the nays, 59. Therefore, we exceeded the two-thirds majority that's required, and the motion carries. Sorry for the delay. We're on Article 28. As I mentioned when we started this, Article 27 and Article 28 were identical at the time the town law was created. I don't think it's appropriate for a town to vote twice on the same issue, so I would entertain a motion under Article 28 if we take no action on Article 28. Chuck said, I think we have Chuck saying so. Move to, do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of taking no action on Article 28, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Article 29 is a different version of a zoning bylaw. It was brought by citizens' petition. Because it's significantly different, it basically strikes a lot of things from the version that you just passed. I'm going to offer the citizen who made the petition the opportunity to bring that motion to the floor, Article 29. Mr. Batista, do you wanna do that? The only caveat is that you have to say, "I move that we rescind the vote on Article 27," and then, because we can't have two zoning bylaws at the end of this meeting.
Matthew Batista, cut off road. And, Mr. Moderator, I motion to table this amendment.
He moved to take no action.
Correct.
Mr. Batista moves that we take no action on Article 29. Is there a second?
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. I don't need that in writing, actually. So, any discussion? All those in favor of taking no action on Article 29?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Article 30 is an article for moratorium on marijuana establishments. Yes, sir. Town Council recommends that we take, that I entertain a motion to take no action on this. However, this was a citizens' petition, so I'm going to afford the citizen the opportunity to decide if he wants to move forward with it or to take no action.
Mr. Moderator, Dennis Fleming, West Street, I move to take no action on...
There's a motion and a second to take no action on Article 30. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we're through those. We have the same thing happening with solar energy facilities that we had with marijuana in that there are two identical warrant articles. We're going to have a robust and healthy debate on the first one, and we're not going to do anything on the second one. Article 31, solar energy facilities, do I have a motion?
Michael Spartan, Sheldon Road. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Chapter 140-10.1, Solar Energy Facilities Special Permit and Site Plan Review, by striking the following provision. H, waiver of requirements. The planning board may waive any requirements or conditions as specified in this bylaw if they determine that the requirements and/or conditions are not necessary. The waiver of any requirement or condition shall be made at the sole discretion of the planning board. Furthermore, non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of Berry.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second, so just so everyone understands, we passed a zoning bylaw at a previous meeting. The State Attorney General suggested that we strike one of the paragraphs in that bylaw, and that's what this motion is to do. This is a zoning article, so we require two-thirds. If it were unanimous, I wouldn't need to count that. So, is there any discussion of this article? Yes, sir.
Michael Spartan, Sheldon Road. Just one thing, the State Attorney Gen, I mean, the State Attorney General didn't strike this comment or tell us to. They took exception to it, and they wrote several long paragraphs, and we decided that the most, the most simple route was to just strike it.
Thank you, sir.
So, that's, that's what I said.
Yes, sir.
Do you like it?
Yep.
I'm just wanting to... So... If this, if, if, if this one is stable...
Nice cross.
We have the count. The yeas, 124; the nays, 59. Therefore, we exceeded the two-thirds majority that's required, and the motion carries. Sorry for the delay. We're on Article 28. As I mentioned when we started this, Article 27 and Article 28 were identical at the time the town law was created. I don't think it's appropriate for a town to vote twice on the same issue, so I would entertain a motion under Article 28 if we take no action on Article 28. Chuck said, I think we have Chuck saying so. Move to, do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of taking no action on Article 28, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Article 29 is a different version of a zoning bylaw. It was brought by citizens' petition. Because it's significantly different, it basically strikes a lot of things from the version that you just passed. I'm going to offer the citizen who made the petition the opportunity to bring that motion to the floor, Article 29. Mr. Batista, do you wanna do that? The only caveat is that you have to say, "I move that we rescind the vote on Article 27," and then, because we can't have two zoning bylaws at the end of this meeting.
Matthew Batista, cut off road. And, Mr. Moderator, I motion to table this amendment.
He moved to take no action.
Correct.
Mr. Batista moves that we take no action on Article 29. Is there a second?
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. I don't need that in writing, actually. So, any discussion? All those in favor of taking no action on Article 29?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Article 30 is an article for moratorium on marijuana establishments. Yes, sir. Town Council recommends that we take, that I entertain a motion to take no action on this. However, this was a citizens' petition, so I'm going to afford the citizen the opportunity to decide if he wants to move forward with it or to take no action.
Mr. Moderator, Dennis Fleming, West Street, I move to take no action on...
There's a motion and a second to take no action on Article 30. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we're through those. We have the same thing happening with solar energy facilities that we had with marijuana in that there are two identical warrant articles. We're going to have a robust and healthy debate on the first one, and we're not going to do anything on the second one. Article 31, solar energy facilities, do I have a motion?
Michael Spartan, Sheldon Road. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Chapter 140-10.1, Solar Energy Facilities Special Permit and Site Plan Review, by striking the following provision. H, waiver of requirements. The planning board may waive any requirements or conditions as specified in this bylaw if they determine that the requirements and/or conditions are not necessary. The waiver of any requirement or condition shall be made at the sole discretion of the planning board. Furthermore, non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of Berry.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second, so just so everyone understands, we passed a zoning bylaw at a previous meeting. The State Attorney General suggested that we strike one of the paragraphs in that bylaw, and that's what this motion is to do. This is a zoning article, so we require two-thirds. If it were unanimous, I wouldn't need to count that. So, is there any discussion of this article? Yes, sir.
Michael Spartan, Sheldon Road. Just one thing, the State Attorney Gen, I mean, the State Attorney General didn't strike this comment or tell us to. They took exception to it, and they wrote several long paragraphs, and we decided that the most, the most simple route was to just strike it.
Thank you, sir.
So, that's, that's what I said.
Yes, sir.
Do you like it?
Yep.
I'm just wanting to...
Sorry for the delay. We're on Article 28. As I mentioned when we started this, Article 27 and Article 28 were identical at the time the town law was created. I don't think it's appropriate for a town to vote twice on the same issue. So, I would entertain a motion under Article 28 if we take no action on Article 28. Chuck said...I think we have Chuck saying so. Move to...do we have a second?
Yeah.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of taking no action on Article 28, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Article 29 is a different version of a zoning bylaw. It was brought by citizen's petition. Because it's significantly different, it basically strikes a lot of things from the version that you just passed. I'm going to offer the citizen who made the petition the opportunity to bring that motion to the floor, Article 29. Mr. Batista, do you want to do that? The only caveat is that you have to say, "I move that we rescind the vote on Article 27," and then...because we can't have two zoning bylaws at the end of this meeting.
Matthew Batista, cut off road. And, Mr. Moderator, I motion to table this amendment.
He moved to take no action.
Correct.
Mr. Batista moves that we take no action on Article 29. Is there a second?
Second amendment.
It's moved and seconded. I don't need that in writing, actually. So, any discussion? All those in favor of taking no action on Article 29?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Article 30 is an article for moratorium on marijuana establishments. Town Council recommends that we take...that I entertain a motion to take no action on this. However, this was a citizen's petition, so I'm going to afford the citizen the opportunity to decide if he wants to move forward with it or to take no action.
Mr. Moderator, Dennis Fleming, West Street, I move to take no action on...
There's a motion and a second to take no action on Article 30. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. We're through those. We have the same thing happening with solar energy facilities that we had with marijuana in that there are two identical warrant articles. We're going to have a robust and healthy debate on the first one, and we're not going to do anything on the second one. Article 31, Solar Energy Facilities, do I have a motion?
Douglas Martin, Sheldon Road. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Chapter 140-10.1, Solar Energy Facilities Special Permit and Site Plan Review by striking the following provision. H, waiver of requirements. The planning board may waive any requirements or conditions as specified in this bylaw if they determine that the requirements and/or conditions are not necessary. The waiver of any requirement or condition shall be made at the sole discretion of the planning board. Furthermore, non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of area.
I have a motion and a second, so just so everyone understands, we passed a zoning bylaw at a previous meeting. The State Attorney General suggested that we strike one of the paragraphs in that bylaw, and that's what this motion is to do. This is a zoning article, so we require two-thirds. If it were unanimous, I wouldn't need to count that. So...is there any discussion of this article? Yes, sir.
Douglas Martin, Sheldon Road. Just one thing. The State Attorney Gen...the State Attorney General didn't strike this comment or tell us to. They took exception to it, and they wrote several long paragraphs, and we decided that the most...the most simple route was to just strike it.
Thank you, sir.
That's...that's what I said.
I had a rather lengthy conversation with the Assistant Attorney General regarding this waiver provision that was in the solar bylaw. And their concerns were it's undefined and unlimited in its scope, and that anything and everything basically could be waived with the additional paragraph there saying in the sole discretion of the planning board. And the Attorney General suggested very strongly that we either eliminate or amend it drastically to prove it by having some restrictions and definitions. The amount of time that the planning board has devoted over the last year and a half to the marijuana bylaw that quite nicely evolved past this evening meant that their time was more directed towards that product than the attention towards working out some language for the solar bylaw. It's going to be my suggestion to the planning board that in the future months, we go back to the drawing board and come up with some better language to present to the town at a future town meeting, to have some form of waiver provision in the solar bylaw.
Any further discussion?
Does everybody know this question has nothing to do with my support of what's been presented because I do? I just want to make sure the questions...or the motion, if I'm reading it right, when it says, "will amend the zoning bylaw chapter such and such." Question is, is it technically a zoning bylaw chapter currently in the state's act? Or is it properly worded differently if it's the draft or that chapter which was approved at such and such last meeting? I don't know if dotting the i and crossing the t makes a difference in the documentation to say, "Was the vote fair? Did it reference the right clause?"
Does Attorney Baer feel that there's anything wrong with the wording of this motion?
I guess I'm a little confused as to what selectman Urban is raising. The provision that is being asked to be removed has been approved by the Attorney General in his part of the town's solar zoning bylaw at present moment.
Okay. You misunderstood. I didn't realize. I thought we were still in that.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. I would entertain a motion to take no action on Article 32. I need to know who's saying so.
Arthur Rhodes.
I have a so moved. Do I have a...
Second.
Second. Thank you. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of taking no action on Article 32, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Just a moment. The town clerk needs to know your name again.
Phil Edwards, United States Attorney.
Thank you. Article 3, A Zoning Change to the Business Commercial District.
Chris Higgins, West Street, speaking on behalf of my father Ronald Higgins. Article 33, I move that the town will vote to amend the town of Berry zoning bylaw by amending the zoning map to include the following: 10.41 acre parcel as described in our plan entitled Plan of Land in Berry, Massachusetts, showing proposed zoning changes dated April 15, 2019, in the Business Commercial District. Furthermore, non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of area.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this?
Chuck Redlow, Long Island Road. I see the map provided in the booklet handed out this evening, but I don't have a sense of where that map is in the town of Berry. Could somebody clue me in, please?
It's directly behind our existing business savings power sports. Thank you.
Any other discussion? This is a zoning article. It requires two-thirds majority.
Hi, Molly Wheeler, Fruitland. I'm just trying to understand a little more information as to your rationale for voting for the change in and leaving of this.
We've been in discussions with the planning board and town council and considering building a solar field behind this store that would power the store and provide the downtown business district with clean energy.
Any more discussion? Yes, sir.
Douglas Martin, Sheldon Road. The planning board recommended a favorable review for this change. It's changing zoning to the building commercial, which is already existing on that property, to allow a solar field to be built up behind there. And we think it's a good location, and it meets the requirements of the bylaw for solar.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm so sorry. You all right? Do you want to...do you have something to say? Okay. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Article 34, A Second Zoning Change to the Business Commercial.
Again, Chris Higgins, West Street, speaking on behalf of my father Ronald Higgins. Article 34, I move that the town will vote to amend the town of Berry zoning bylaw by amending the zoning map to include the following: 4.8 acre parcel as described in our plan entitled Plan of Land in Berry, Massachusetts, showing proposed zoning changes dated April 15, 2019, in the Business Commercial District. Furthermore, non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of area.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Article 35, We Have A Zoning Change To The R-80 District.
My name is Richard McDonald of 344 Pleasant Street. I move that the town vote to amend the code of the town of Berry, zoning, Chapter 140, by changing the zoning district where property located at 369 Nichols Road, assesses map H, lots 369, described in the Worcester District Registry of Deeds Book 4172, page 586 to R-8. Furthermore, no substantial changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of area.
Could you...could the person making the motion come back up here? I'd ask for unanimous consent that we allow that motion to be restated. Hearing no objection, could you please make that motion?
I'm...
Yeah. Just read the thing right here.
I move that the town will vote to amend the zoning map as attached, which I presented.
I'm just going to repeat this for everybody. So, he moved that the town vote to amend the zoning map by changing the zoning district to the property located at 369 Nichols Road. The thing about no substantive changes. So, the issue was that his original language was still wrong. It didn't say to change the map. So, we have the map now, and it's in the...it's in the... Is there any discussion? Oh, okay. I'll call it in a second.
My name is Michael Rogan. I live on Nichols Road, 370 Nichols Road. I just want to appeal to the voters in this town, and I ask you if you'd like a gravel operation next to your house. It's going to be right next to the residence on Nichols Road. We only represent about 5% of the people here, but it is an issue for us, a concern for the families that live down in our sections, whereas a lot of schoolchildren get off the school bus in the day, with the large trucks going in and out, things that involve the typical excavation operation. So, it is a safety issue for us as residents, and I'd just like you to think about that. Thank you. Thank you.
Philip Hubbard, James Street. I'd like to know what the current zoning is and what the reason for the zoning map change would be, and if the planning board is in favor of the change.
Can you first tell us the...what's the current zoning of that lot?
The current zoning is just good for like, single-family houses or whatever. Now, we own a lot of land there. We'd like to remove the gravel so that on the R-80, we would be able to put two-family apartment houses if it was so big. And as far as the gravel operation, it's not a big operation, but it's land in the Berry Home, and we bought it from them, and it was a gravel pit before, and we just want to finish it off and grade the land up.
It's currently R-20, R-15? R-20? Could the planning board tell us whether they approved it?
Douglas Martin, Sheldon Road. We...the planning board recommended a favorable decision for this, and it's zone R-20 and R-15. There's a sliver of it that's zoned R-80. And we're going to have a gravel removal operation that has to be in the R-80 zone. So, we're changing it to R-80. It's not a big facility. It's not a big area. It's probably a one-and-a-half to two-year operation, and we had several comments on children, school buses, and we have a draft special permit where we've addressed those concerns. We've put some conditions in as far as hours of operation and that sort of thing. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hubbard.
Mr. Moderator, Dennis Fleming, West Street. Several of us visited that site on different occasions and met with neighbors. The area in which Mr. McDonald wants to move the gravel, that area had already casually had gravel removed from it years ago. He just wants to extend it a little bit further. He's not running a gravel operation there. He's removing gravel and relocating it to another spot that he owns where he currently has gravel operations. So, all he's doing here is removing it. He's not screening it. He's not doing anything. Is that correct?
Any other discussion?
Neil Anders, West Street. I'd just like to address the planning board and see what conditions they put in there to address the potter's needs and issues.
Douglas Martin, Sheldon Road. The draft and conditions for this special permit will deal with hours of operation, requirements for dust control and noise control, and we're going to ask for a plan of how the trucks will get in and out and heavy equipment. Again, it's not going to be a gravel operation there. It's just going to be excavating material from there and then shipping it out. That's not all the conditions, but that's the gist of what we put together in the draft.
Any other discussion? This is a zoning article. It requires two-thirds. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I'm going to do a standing, just standing. We're not going to use counters yet. All those in favor of the motion? Those...okay, you may be seated. All those opposed to the motion? The motion carries with two-thirds. Thank you. Article 36... Article 36, a resolution regarding the state flag of Massachusetts. Do I have someone to make a motion under Article 36? If not, I would entertain a, oh, there you are.
Hello, Elizabeth Wilson, Danilo. Mr. Moderator, sorry. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve a resolution in support of changing the state flag of the state of Massachusetts. Whereas the history of the state of Massachusetts is replete with instances of conflict between the European colonists and the native nations of the region, the first extent that they handed friendship to the colonists on their shores in 1620 and helped them to survive starvation during the Second Crusaders on the land. Whereas members of the native nation from the state of Massachusetts is named, were eventually killed by Niles Standish, first commander of the Plymouth colony in April of 1623. They are the two years after the killings arrived on their shores. Whereas the native colonial broadsword brandished above the head of the native man on the Massachusetts state flag of the seal is modeled, older model, Standish's own broadsword, broadsword, borrowed from the Pilgrim Ball in Plymouth by the illustrator Edmund Barrett in 1684. Whereas the belt binding the natives' cloak on the flag of the seal is modeled after a belt worn by Metis hominid known to the English as King Philip, who was among the Wampanoag leaders who resorted to a mutually destructive war in 1675 to 76 in defense of native lands against Eurocolonial infringement. Whereas the proportions of the bodies of the native men on this flag of the seal were taken from the native scalp and windcrew. The ball modeled after a bow taken from the native men shot and killed by a colonist in Slenderia in 1665. And his features taken from the photograph of a Jew rute chief from Gray Falls, Montana, considered by the Australian to be a fine specimen of an Indian who lived in Massachusetts. Whereas the history of relations between Massachusetts since colonial times and the native nations who continue to live within its borders includes the forced return of thousands of so-called train Indians on their island of West Harbor, where they died by the hundreds of exposure in 1675. Their subsequent enslavement of Boston, Bermuda, and Academy Islands. The offering of 40-pound sterling is bounty for the scouts of native men, women, and children of Massachusetts. Beginning in 1686, increased to 100-pound sterling for the scouts of native adult males by 722. Half that amount for native women and children. Whereas native nations within the boundaries of Massachusetts were kept in the state of certain and their members legally considered incompetent or state until the nonviolent action of the so-called Nashke Rebellion of 1833 led to the granting of native self-rule by the Massachusetts Legislature in 1734, as if the southern rights of native self-government was the Massachusetts Legislature's to confer. Whereas Native Americans were legally prohibited from eight-stepping foot into Boston from 1675 until 2004, when that rule was finally repealed. Whereas the 400th anniversary of the landing of the Eurocolonist at Plymouth plantation, which gave rise to the world-shame, genocidal wars, and deliberate policies of cultural destruction against native nations of this continent, is approaching in the year 2020, affording every citizen of the Commonwealth a chance to reflect upon this history and to a new awareness of a better relationship between the descendants of the Eurocolonial immigrants and the native nations of the Commonwealth. Whereas the land area now known as the Town of Barry shares a rich native history with modern tribal nations like the Hittite, who frequented this area for thousands of years before the first colonies that was arrived in 1720. Now, therefore, we have resolved that the Town of Barry here by Dot's Resolution is supported H 2776 and S 1877. I resolve providing for the creation of a special commission relative to the seal and motto of the Commonwealth. And request that the Representative Donald, Donald Reshun and Senator Angoldy support the vote for the aforementioned resolve in general court and that the joint commission of state administration and regulatory oversight, after holding a public hearing on the resolve, recorded out favorably. And if the legislation shall pass, the governor should sign it and work with members of the general court to ensure its success.
Hang on. That's the end of your motion. Do I have a second? It's been made seconded. Is there any discussion of the motion? Mr. Lipson.
Now that Sam looked through West Street, I just had a question. I don't know if this is a binding vote or is it non-binding or is it?
This has to be a non-binding resolution.
It would not be.
This has to be a non-binding resolution because of the language.
It's a direction that we want, it would be in pursuit of the law.
That's correct. Was that, oh, yes.
Andrew, West Street. I asked to have this on the, yes, I asked to have this on the warrant tonight because it's an error that I think after all this time needs to be addressed. It's a structural language that we look at every day on the state flag and it's about suppression and holding people to less. And I don't think that's what this town is about. I don't think that's what the state is about. And I'd like to have that ratified to the Angoldy and Donnie, who carried that banner into the courthouse. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Urban.
Just a simple question, please. If I'm correct, non-binding asking the senator and representative to support the governor's development of a commission, which would then bring people together and potentially fund an effort to determine an alternative? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding what we're asking and knew before.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Let's try that one more time. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The motion's defeated. We have one more administrative issue. There was a language problem on one of the articles.
I move that we rescind the vote on Article 8 and amend it to read as follows: To transfer from free cash $20,000 for costs associated with assistance of recertification of progress. Transfer from free cash $1,500 for special price expenses. Transfer from free cash $6,000 for cyclical reinspection costs. And transfer from free cash $7,700 for annual interim value adjustments for a total of $35,200.
I have a motion in a second. Just so everyone understands, the original language took the money from the wrong place. So, they're fixing that. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. I would entertain a motion to dissolve town meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.